2014, Raymore City Council Work Session. We have three items on the agenda tonight, beginning with the presentation of the MPDAS Stormwater 2, or Phase 2 Stormwater Management. Toss it to you here, should I just toss it to him?
Oh, just go right, well, I'll introduce it just very quickly, sir. I know everyone's on the edge of their seat for this first item, so. Mike and his staff have been working extremely hard on this plan over the course of the last several months since February. We think it's going to be a good plan. I would let the council know that next Monday morning, we have a three-hour meeting scheduled with the EPA. They finally did make contact with us, and so we'll be meeting with them to hear their feedback on the plan, but we are really hoping for positive feedback from them, because this plan encompasses a ton of elements, a ton of the elements that they told us we needed to. It's going to have a very good calendar associated with it, with some really good follow-up. And with that, I will turn it over to Mike.
Thank you. What Jim alluded to a little bit is that as part of the consent decree that we entered into with the EPA, we had three elements that we had to complete within six months of finalizing decree. One was to submit a revised stormwater management plan, and second item was standard operating procedures to implement that plan, and then an implementation schedule. And we have completed all of that and submitted final documents to them a couple of weeks ago. Some elements of this plan, they've had for several months since last spring, and we are hopeful, as Jim said, hopeful on Monday, we'll get some feedback and can close this out and then move forward with implementation of the plan. So what I wanted to do this evening is spend a little time, kind of walk you through the plan that we have developed, the action steps that we as a city have to take as part of the requirements, and it all ties back to our stormwater discharge permit that we referred to during the times when we were doing the stream buffer ordinance revision and the water quality ordinance adoption. So this all comes from, and these requirements are from our discharge permit. So within the discharge permit, there are six what they refer to as minimum control measures. The first one is public education and outreach. The second one is public participation and involvement. The third is illicit discharge detection and elimination. The next one is construction site runoff control, post-construction stormwater management, and then pollution prevention and good housekeeping. So within the plan, each one of these minimum control measures have a number of permit requirements, and under those, we've developed a best management practice and measurable So first one is dealing with public education and outreach, and I'm going to paraphrase or just kind of cliff note the permit requirement, but it says, "The permit shall implement a public education program to distribute educational materials to the community or conduct equivalent outreach activities about the impacts of stormwater discharges." So with that, one of the areas that we are going to be, one of the areas we are targeting is the installation of pet waste stations along our pathways with some educational signs regarding cleanup after your pet and such. Another one we will be doing is installing along the riparian corridors is don't mow beyond this point signs. We have a lot of areas where folks that abut the streams are mowing right up to the banks. That's for several things. One, it contributes to erosion to the banks. Two, it just doesn't provide any type of water quality mitigation or slowing the water down and those type of things. So we hope to educate them about that the creekside areas are sensitive and don't mow down to them. Another area we are doing is stenciling our storm drains that, to educate folks, don't, there's, you'd be surprised, there's a lot of confusion out there where folks actually think that the storm sewer is connected to the sanitary sewer system, and we just need to educate them that that drains directly to a water body. We will also, we are also planning to update the city's website and continue education and outreach through our household hazardous waste program and the prescription drug drop-off So again, carrying on with the public outreach, one of the other things that we need to do is identify target audiences and provide education. And what we have found is, one of the, specifically it says on page three, identification of target audiences for the permit's education program who are likely to have significant stormwater impacts, including commercial, industrial, and industrial and institutional entities. One of the biggest contributors we're finding is single-family home construction. We've had several education sessions with the builders, and we still find they are extremely lax with maintaining their erosion control around the sites. That is probably the most significant area we have for pollutants entering our stormwater system. So beginning in 2015, we are going to hold a, we are going to basically license the contract, the home builders. We are going to hold a mandatory training session, at least one if not two sessions that they're required to attend. And after that, we will be stepping up our enforcement through stop work orders, stepping up our on-call erosion control, you know, installing it in themselves, you know, installing it on their behalf if it's creating a real problem, but we feel it very strongly that we really need to step up this area. Any given time, you can go through a neighborhood where a building is occurring and the erosion control has been run over, it's not been kept up. We track the number of permits that we've issued and the number of correction orders that we have issued, and we have not seen a significant reduction at all over the past couple of years. So another area we're going to, going on to page five, we're going to plan to inform individuals or groups how to become involved. We're really going to be stepping up our presence on the city's website. We're going to be creating a stormwater webpage with links to other educational materials. We'll be posting our, every year, we have to do a report of our activities associated with this plan. We'll be posting that. We are looking at the potential of some slides or some PSAs on the city's website. We will, we have been participating with Mark, and Mark has been providing us brochures and other information. We'll continue to make those available here and at the Public Works Operations and Park Buildings. We will continue to issue press releases through the Raymore Review. One new thing we are doing is, one of the things that comes out of this plan is we have to measure our effectiveness of the plan and how our message is getting out. So this year, within this citizen survey, we're going to start asking some stormwater-related questions. Mark already does that, but they really don't, they reach into Cass County, they reach into Raymore, but it's considering the area that that covers, they really don't get a lot of coverage in Raymore. So we'll be adding that to the citizen survey. We'll continue to host an informational booth at the Festival in the Park. This year, we did do kind of a survey as part of the rain barrel raffle. In order to enter into the raffle, we asked some questions about the stormwater awareness and water quality awareness, so we'll continue to do that throughout the program here. The next minimum control measure is public participation and involvement, and so we have to educate the public and others on stormwater quality issues. We also have to give them opportunities to participate and be involved in the water quality process. What we will do after we get through and have what we consider a final document and prior to presenting the plan to council for formal adoption, we'll be hosting a public information open house, provide people the opportunity to provide some input to the plan. We'll also publish the plan for 30 days on the city's website. We'll also, as part of this, reach out to homeowners associations, commercial and business associations, and utilize the latest information and make them aware of stormwater quality opportunities, such as stenciling the storm sewers within their neighborhoods. We'll also use the latest information from the citizen survey that we get back to target and reach out and find out the best resources for getting folks involved with this. And again, in continuing, we'll provide civic and community groups with materials and assistance if they want to stencil, the drain to stream type things, participation in Earth Day activities, maybe host a stream cleanup day or something associated with that, and then continue the Household Hazardous Waste Program. The next MCM deals with illicit discharge detection and elimination. Basically, anything that is not stormwater that enters the stormwater, that enters the stormwater system is considered a pollutant, and we have to do what we can to eliminate that from occurring. So one of the first things we need to do is develop a program, and the first step in that was to develop a map of our outfalls, and we have identified 11 outfalls where the, where stormwater leaves the city, and every, semi-annually, we need to take samples during dry weather to, and then test the water quality to see if there is any pollutants that have entered the system there. We have done that, and we have started, and we are sampling and have reported initial group of sampling. We haven't found anything, and we've reported that to the DNR, and we will be continuing to do that and report it annually as part of our annual report to the DNR. So this shows the outfall locations. We've also developed an SOP for inspecting the outfalls, and as I said, every year, we will prepare a report. Also have to identify the requirement, I'm on page 27, I'm kind of getting lost between flipping. Jim said, "Make sure you don't get lost," so I'm on page 27. We also have to identify areas and priority areas with a high likelihood of potential for illicit discharges. We've developed SOPs for identifying the illicit discharges, and we've identified 45 locations which are shown here on the map. Some of them are on like Evan Street where the car repairs and the body shops are, others are some of the food prep areas that perhaps could have grease trap overflows and those type of things. And we have a measurable goal to inspect 25% or 12 of those on an annual basis, and we will also report those findings of those inspections in our annual report. The other thing we've done is, as part of our, we've also developed a number of procedures to trace the sources of illicit discharges and what do you do if you encounter an illicit discharge. Also, as part of our conditional use permits, we have included provisions on new conditional use permits that allow us to enter the premises to do inspections, random inspections, to make sure there aren't illicit discharges occurring on-site there. So we've, again, this is more of our reporting requirements, for tracing illicit discharges. We also have standard procedures for removing illicit discharges. This is one we encountered a couple of months ago. There was a contractor power washing a swimming pool and taking the scale off and just pumping that out into the curb line, and so we stopped that and we cleaned up the discharge and disposed of it. So we do have the proper ordinance in place through our nuisance code, and we feel that the ordinance allows us to effectively enforce penalties and actions for illicit discharges. So one of the things we do need to do is train our staff to, all of city staff, to identify illicit discharges that they may see in the field. We're also going to be providing good housekeeping training to city Raymore Operations and Park staff for just their good, their day-to-day operations to make sure that they minimize their potential for spills, and publish two articles a year in the Raymore Review regarding dumping and/or illicit discharges. And there's some crossover here. So again, part of the education process also falls under this, is the pet waste station, the stenciling of the inlets, and the NOMO signs. So, and then this is our reporting requirements. What we'll do is, on an annual basis, we'll review what, if any, illicit discharges we found, where they're occurring, and perhaps, you know, refocus some of our efforts there, increase the frequency of inspections based on what we are finding. Now, there's also, there's also some non, there's some minor pollution pollutants that we can identify that we don't consider to be significant contributors to pollution. We've identified those as our typical waterline flushing, landscape and irrigation, lawn watering, discharges from swimming pool maintenance, just groundwater, groundwater from like sump pump discharges, foundation drains, condensation from air conditioners, springs, street, you know, firefighting activities, water that comes from our street sweeping, and those type of activities. The next, I'm on page 43 now of the plan. The next one deals with construction site stormwater runoff control. This is the erosion control that we've had in place for quite some time, and a lot of this is, has been completed. We have codes in place, we've adopted the codes, and we provide, we require upfront financial security for all land disturbance to cover the costs of correcting deficiencies. We do review 100% of all of the single-family home site plans to make sure that they have proper erosion control measures shown on the plot plan prior to issuance of the building permit. We review 100% of all of the construction plans, the subdivision plans, any of the grading and land disturbance plans, to make sure they have proper erosion control and it's maintained. This is where we're going to conduct a presentation to inform the home builders of proper installation and maintenance procedures for erosion control. We have our engineering technicians receive training on a yearly basis regarding erosion control and new techniques, and we have developed standard operating procedures, inspection forms, and plan review checklists to go along with that, and those will be reviewed on an annual basis and amended as appropriate. We have a requirement to receive and consider information submitted by the public. We have several portals through which they can do that. We have the report of concern, they can always call by phone, or we have the iPhone app as well where they can call and raise concerns about stormwater runoff from construction sites or running onto their property. We do, again, the permit requirement of having SOPs for site inspection. We require the contractor to keep written records of their maintenance activities on the erosion control and their weekly inspections. They are required to inspect it weekly and after a significant rain event. We will also spot check independently to make sure things are in place and that their paperwork is in order. The next minimum control measure deals with post-construction stormwater management. That is, that's our water quality ordinances, that's the stormwater treatment ordinance that was just adopted, and the stream buffer ordinance meets these requirements. So we, you know, here are the requirements. Develop and implement a strategy of non-structural and non-structural BMPs, develop requirements for adequate long-term operation and maintenance, adopt an ordinance, and provide training for city personnel and educate site developers regarding installation and maintenance of BMPs. All of those are components and have been included in the stormwater quality ordinance that was recently adopted. One of the things we are going to be doing this year is, we're going to start inspecting the existing detention ponds through, and build an inventory there. We're finding that there's a lot of trash and other things that are not being cleaned out of those that then make their way into the stream. So part of the program for the next year or so will be not only inventorying those, but educating the property owners on the need to clean those on a regular basis. So another requirement is to adopt a set of standards. We have done that by adopting the Mark and APWA Best Management Practices Manual, and it does have, the last bullet point there, that does have quite a bit of flexibility in the design criteria of how the developers and builders can meet those requirements. So we have to adopt an ordinance, we have done that, and this is lagging a little bit. We had submitted to this, to them prior to the council actually adopting the water quality ordinance, and so what we will do is, we will update the plan this, when we submit our annual report to the DNR, that that box has been checked off. So and what we are working on now is a number of SOPs that will go along with the inspecting the BMPs. We've got a couple of projects in the pipeline that are going to be required if they move forward to install the BMPs and enter into maintenance agreements, and we'll kind of use that as a springboard to then, as part of the maintenance agreements, it'll outline maintenance activities, inspection activities that are to be performed, and we'll use that to develop our SOPs to make sure that those are complied with by the property owner. Other things that we've already done, we've adopted a growth management plan, we've adopted a parks master plan, we've, one of the requirements is that we have a funding source to, for open space acquisition. We have a park fee-in lieu which meets that requirement, and we've, as I said, we've incorporated flexible design criteria into our BMPs, and we will start making information available to the public regarding use of rain barrels and other alternative landscaping techniques that'll be built into our website as well as the Festival in the Park booth that we So we've identified a protected sensitive areas, we've got our riparian corridors, we, as part of the development process, they need, developers need to do a jurisdictional determination that will also identify wetlands on the site and any protection that needs to be done to minimize impacts to those features. So last minimum control measure deals with pollution prevention and good housekeeping. That deals with our municipal facilities. So we are, on page 71, required to develop an operation and maintenance program that includes a training component. So we will be training all of our staff regarding pollution and spill prevention. We've also identified the four facilities that have potential to impact stormwater quality. That's the Public Works Operation and Maintenance Facility, the Animal Control Facility, the Parks Maintenance Facility, and Raymore City Hall. We've done kind of a threat assessment for those facilities and developed a stormwater pollution plan for, along with SOPs for the Public Works Operations and Maintenance and the Parks Maintenance Facility. Animal control, we really didn't see a lot of potential there, and Raymore City Hall will be developing a stormwater management plan for City Hall. There'll be things like clean litter out of the, around the parking lot, clean, make sure you don't have litter around the dumpster, those type of things. So that, as I said, we've completed the Public Works Operations Facility and the Parks Maintenance Facility. We also have to look at incorporating into our flood management projects, water quality protection and practices. So, you know, as part of the consent decree, we are installing rain gardens along the Eagles Glen Trail. As part of the farmer's market, we are also including some filter strips and some other native planting areas to meet the stormwater requirements that are outlined, excuse me, in our ordinance. So this is some of the specific training areas that we'll be having for staff, fleet and building maintenance, erosion and sediment control, illicit discharge detection, snow removal, spill prevention, chemical handling and application, and spill prevention and cleanup. And the goal here is to have this kind of match everything that we are putting out to the public, so we have a uniform message throughout the program. We also need to reduce floatables and other pollutants that may enter the system. We address that by cleaning, inspecting our 25% of our stormwater inlets annually, and then we sweep the streets twice a year and also our municipal parking lots. And with that, I am available for questions, and then we can talk about next steps.
Next question?
Well, first off, I just wanted to recognize the effort that went into this. I think this is very thorough, very well thought out and constructed, and wanted to acknowledge staff and good work on this. Thinking of pollution prevention, do we require in our new construction code that portable toilet facilities be on-site?
We don't require it. We do track their locations, and the vast majority of our projects do have them on-site. Even the single-family home sites have one available in close proximity.
Kevin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just kind of curious, we're going through this, I'm referring back to some of my experiences at the plant. In emergency situations, I know that we, being operators and maintenance personnel at the plant, we were, and I appreciate everything you're doing, because this is very similar to what I'm used to. We were required to know where all emergency apparatuses were to protect the stream waters, particularly the little blue river up there, if we had a chemical spill. And what I'm saying is that we had baffles and dams to block off the stormwater inlets going into the system. I'm curious, do we as staff have emergency stuff, so like when a contractor, I'll say inadvertently, even though I don't believe that, dumps water into the gutter system and into the gutter system and travels down, would, does the staff have available to, the ability to block off the inlet to the sewer system there with something temporary?
Yes. Sorry. Yeah, and in fact, one of the first things when an illicit discharge is detected in our SOPs is to disconnect it from the storm sewer system. So to that end, all of the crew leaders, operations maintenance crew leaders have a spill kit in their, in their truck, which is basically, as you said, it's a, it's a duffel bag that's got diapers and the dams and those type of things in it. The engineering technicians also have those in, those in their vehicles. There's also one on the wall at the, at the maintenance facility.
Okay, and I'm kind of curious if it'd be a good idea to think about possibly even having, you know, and I'm not trying to put any work onto our police staff, but they are our first responders. If we would have a, a duffel bag that the, on, the shift supervisor would, would have available for their, because in, in certain cases, many times our police may be there before our, our public works is.
Sure, we could do that.
Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of the stuff that you find in the, the system probably comes from a lot of trash-related stuff. People get rid of stuff that they don't bag it. Is there any sort of training or whatever that you can deal with that?
That's part of the public education that we're going to be doing through our, through the website, through PSAs, public service announcements, through the, through the Raymore Review. Yeah, I think, I think we need to educate folks that, as I said earlier, that the storm sewer is not connected to the sanitary sewer. It does drain the streams, it does drain the lakes and, and other water bodies.
Senator Boehner?
I'm just thinking about some of the ordinances that we've, we've discussed over the past year. And I'm wondering with the public involvement and participation, if there is an element of that where we would, we would explain the relationship between the EPA and these regulations and how that all works so that the public is, is well aware. I remember sitting in, in several of our council meetings where the, the things that we were trying to pass in order to comply were being directly opposed by those who, who were highly concerned about the quality of water and that, and the environment.
I think we could do that, but I think part of the, and what we saw during that process is we've got to kind of have a balancing act. You know, we've got to balance the, the landowner rights and the, and the, the environment, you know, what the environmental party's concerned. So I think, yeah, we can, we can definitely work that into our education process.
Member Morehead?
Mr. Fearborn, obviously this is heavily driven with education and enforcement. And do, are codes sufficient as far as remedies of enforcement? I mean, if our codes people go out there, I mean, do we need to expand or add to that to, to give some teeth to what they, what they're going to be dealing with?
I think our current codes have the teeth they need. It's a question of educating, as Mike had indicated, educating our people on, and the contractors on when we're going to start enforcing. And to date, there's been a very large gray area associated with bringing contractors up to speed on what they really need to be doing and, to some degree, resistance on their part even when they know. I want to be very careful about the wording I use here. So they need to understand that as of 2015, with a mandatory meeting that we have with them from here on out, you're going to get a warning and then, and then it's not going to be, be as good after that.
Senator Huber?
This is going to be a continuing program going on and on and then, okay, in that case we have a type of geographical error we need to correct on page 20. It is not Lumpkin Creek, but it is Lampkins Fork. That's the name of the creek. And I, you all, I, every time we have something, you put it Lumpkins, and I tell you, it's got to be somewhere, you've got to make the necessary change and make it Lampkins Fork. That's what the name of the, of the branch is.
Ma'am, it's taken directly, directly off of the USGS squad map, and it is shown as Lumpkins Fork.
I mean, it's nothing, it's not earth shaking, but if we're going to do it perpetuated, let's do it right. And let's make sure that it is Lampkins Fork, because that's what the original maps show, Lampkins Fork rather than Lumpkins Creek.
We'll check it.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I also had another question regarding this. In looking at the, the projects, it looks to me like a lot of Ward Four is involved in some of this because we have so many streams, some of them are named and some of them are not, but they run through even 58 Highway. There's one that leads on up to Lee Summit. Then there's the one down there on, there's a couple, I think, on Lucy Webb Road that there's a problem with. And so I'm, I'm wanting to make sure that there's nothing that's going to involve the citizens, that's going to be where they're going to have to make any kind of monetary changes.
Not monetary, but we're going to be, we are going to be impressing on the citizens that we are seeking their involvement and we are doing our best to educate them, and we're going to be surveying them to find out, there's always the difficult part about it, if they're actually being educated. So we're, we're going to try to close the loop going forward. Because one of, one of the, the more, one of, one of the items that was stressed considerably by the EPA is we're not saying you're not doing it, but you're not checking to see if the people are getting it. So that, that's going to be a huge area going forward.
Well, an area that I had concern with was on Lucy Webb, just before you get to Horizon where they've got big, huge rocks that are, I guess, to keep it from washing and maybe even having pollution in there. And it's so unusual because you don't usually see in the heart of any city, you don't see rocks like that. And so I am concerned that that's not going to be taken care of properly. So if you all would take a look at that. Also, what does this do to, to the business community where we have by Subway and back where they have all of those rocks and everything? Does that enter into this in any way? It should.
Other than keeping it clean?
See, that, that would be part of it. How do you keep rocks clean without you getting on them and everything else?
I meant from, I meant clean, clean from paper and stuff like that. Go ahead.
Thank you. One of my questions was, is this plan going to be available to the public? And you said it's going to be on the website, are there going to be other ways the public can get ahold of this, first of all? Second of all, I hope that in all of our educating of people that we'll take advantage of some of the, the groups that we have around here that are great resources for us, South Grandwater, Shadow Lions, The Little Blue, they've got lots of great educational resources that if we're pushing this into the community, they would be a great resource for us to take advantage of. Three more things if I can cram them all in. I wondered if, a couple of things that just struck me, only 25% inspections yearly on the illicit discharge, or is that pretty normal? That seems low to me. And then also sweeping the streets twice a year, is that really enough to keep the litter and things out of our, out of the stormwater? I was concerned that maybe those numbers were a little low. And then finally, with the mandatory training for construction, for builders and things, I wonder, will they also get information as they apply for permits and that sort of thing if by chance they miss the training?
They, they, with every building permit, they are given a manual from APWA on single-family home erosion control practices and, and maintenance. And no, it is going to be mandatory, and if they don't attend or make arrangements to attend, we will stop approving plot plans. That's how serious we are about this, this issue. It is a real issue that needs to be, needs to be addressed. At any given time, you can go through an active building site and three-quarters of the homes will have the silt fence down, and you can follow mud tracks out of the, out of this, out of the development. We really need to crack down on that.
So if I have, if I buy a lot and go to build a house on my lot or get, for example, my brother-in-law to build a house on my lot for me, and he missed the training, I'm out of luck for the next year?
There will be other training available. There's some online, we've looked at some other, some online training, but there are, there are a number of other areas where they can, where we can get, where they can get the training. But I, I think, you know, we may offer it more than, more than once a year, but we, we need to do something. We need to get the message across to them.
And I agree, they need, they need the message, but just to say we have a training twice a year, that, you know, that kind of shuts off the timeframe for, for a lot of people who might not be planning at the time the training is to build a house this year. And then as far as the 25% inspections and sweeping twice, what's, what do you think about that?
Well, it's, what, what we have to do is we have minimum control measures and we have bases on our manpower allocations and that we have set goals that we can meet with current, current staffing and current resources. And so that's, that's how we came up with the 25% a year and the sweeping, sweeping twice a year.
Senator Calog.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I hear Mr. Fearborn talk about involving the community, that, you know, I, that's great. I totally support that, and that's, that's how this battle will probably be won eventually. You know, I, I wouldn't have been so in tune with this had it not been that shoved down my throat what it felt like at the time from my employer. It's very serious in, in many of our employers, you know. And I sit here and I, I see this, and the one thing that comes through my mind is we cannot clean a paintbrush out in the sink at work, you know. And I'm surprised that isn't in here, and I'm not saying it should be, but that's how serious it is, you know. And there's, you know, there was one thing that you couldn't pour down, a soda pop down a drain because the pH was too high or too low or whatever. But anyway, when, when I hear Mr. Fearborn say that this is going to involve the community, I, I also remember a conversation that I had with former councilman John Seamer several years ago before he was voted off the council. And one of his discussions he had with me as far as an idea was to maybe have a program where there could be an incentive by the city that would help support rain barrels for citizens that were interested in this. And, I mean, we, we discussed that briefly years ago, but it, that, that never took anywhere before that. But I, I wanted to bring that up tonight as, as a suggestion, see if that would take some feed or get some interest there. You know, his, his idea that he, that he threw against me, you know, was to mark off or write off some part of the, the water bill if a person was to install rain barrels and something like that. So that's where that's at, and I wanted to bring that up.
Let's go.
Regarding the 25%, the inspection at that rate, that's not to say that we're only going to address 25% of the non-compliances. That's just what we've designated as, as the target number for the initial inspections. And then if anybody is out of compliance or if there's a, an illicit discharge, I mean, that still gets full attention. It's just, it, it's a natural cycle. It's, it's preventative maintenance, it's a preventative measure. I mean, that's just what it's scheduled. Is that, that's correct?
Senator Calog?
Dovetailing off of that, if, if we do detect an illicit discharge on, say, Monday, and that directs or guides staff to go out and start doing the random checks that the CUPs allow for, is there a certain, is there a maximum amount of spot checks that staff is able to do to a certain, to a certain business, you know?
No, the condition, the condition on the conditional use permit doesn't, doesn't limit the number of inspections or, or the, or the time of the inspections.
Councilmember Holden?
I would concur with Councilmember Westcoats' praise of your, your plan. I think you guys did a pretty good job. I think it's pretty comprehensive. One thing that, it's, I guess it's kind of a tactical element that maybe you've included, you gave us kind of a high-level view, obviously. But it's obviously one thing to have a little bit of extra sodium, you know, we have a spring wash from, after you put the brine down, a little bit of pet waste, that stuff breaks down eventually depending upon the volume of water. Obviously, as you've, you've pointed out here or indicated, the more serious issues are things that don't dissolve in water so well such as grease, oil, transmission fluid. And then I think you've addressed that a little bit in the locating priority areas with higher potential for illicit discharge. Obviously, your big concerns are going to be the, the grease traps, the transmission shops, auto repair. Would it be part of your plan or do you think it might be worthy of consideration? Most of those places have to post, for example, food places have to post their food permit. They also have to post their latest health inspection report. Maybe as part of your educational outreach, a poster there that, that they have to post in, in public view that says, you know, "We comply with all city best stormwater management practices. If you see any issues, contact this number."
Sure, we can look, as part of our, community, we can certainly look at that.
Senator Huber?
Everything I've heard, I understand we have to do it because EPA is going to come down hard on us if we don't. And this is a good plan that we have. But I, all I have heard there are action verbs, we have to conduct the surveys, we have to design, we have to create, we have to do paperwork and everything. Do we have the personnel available to do that or is this going to cause us to have to hire someone to handle just this kind of work?
I was actually going to introduce her at the end of this. Sitting in the back corner is Ms. Lori Crandall. You may remember that this year's budget, the council did approve one entire engineering tech to be dedicated to nothing but the administrative, the educational components that are going to go with this plan. As Mike indicated, sometimes we're a little bit short on field personnel, no question about it, for doing things like the street sweeping and, and the number of times that we can do inspections. There's no doubt about that. But as far as the administration of the plan is concerned, you all had the foresight to dedicate one entire person to that particular component. So yes, we do have the personnel in place.
Other comments, questions? Thanks, Mike.
Like to go through the, the next, the next steps. So on, on Monday, as, as Jim indicated earlier, we have a conference call with the EPA to discuss the, the items that we, that we have submitted to them. Hopefully, if they have any comments, the revisions will be relatively, relatively minor. The, the next thing we would do is publish, publish the plan for 30 days on our website and make it available to the public, and then host a, host a neighborhood meeting to, to gather input and then have the, have the council adopt, adopt the plan. We will also be working, as you saw, there's a number of, of tasks and measurable goals and other things that are, that are in here. We'll also be developing a, kind of a five-year, something similar to a CIP, outlining all of the, all of the tasks and timelines and time of the year when it's appropriate to do the various, various items. And so extracting that from here and basically developing an implementation plan for the plan. And then, as I said, we'll be entering into some, some training for city staff and the owners and operators of commercial, commercial and other businesses and starting our outreach program. And I do want to, I do want to, Jim mentioned, Lori, I really want to thank her. A lion's share of the work is, this product is Lori's work, and so we really appreciate the effort that she's put into this.
Thank you again. Move on to item number two, charitable donation ordinance.
Yeah, but they're not, they won't be making any presentation.
Yeah, but they're not, they won't be making any presentation. Thank you, sir. I'll, I'll ask the chief to come up to the table to make the presentation.
Need to grab a microphone.
Um, as you all know, we, uh, met in a work session, um, originally when this came up back in September, uh, and then we met to talk about it in November. And at the direction of the council, uh, we have put together a proposed ordinance, um, that deals with those issues of on-street solicitation. Um, there are a number of references, um, to other ordinances, uh, such as traffic code, section 345. Also, um, we used, um, a significant amount of language as far as the permitting is concerned in this proposed ordinance, uh, that deals with the, uh, chapter 610, which is the peddlers' and solicitors' portion of the code as well. Um, I do want to say that a, a couple of things that came about as a result of the last meeting, um, questions that, uh, came up when you all discussed this before, um, such as the question I think Councilman Westcoat had asked, um, about, uh, cities that had created outright bans of, of this type of activity. Um, I, I did, you know, considerable amount of research and, and, you know, there are a number of cities that have, have absolutely banned this activity completely. Um, a, a number of cities that have done exactly what we're proposing here and made, um, the, the code very restrictive, um, you know, which allows those individuals or organizations to, you know, do, engage in this type of activity, um, as long as they meet all of the criteria that's proposed in the ordinance. Um, and, and as you would imagine, and I did actually bring some of those articles from, um, different jurisdictions throughout the country that have banned that activity, um, you know, and, and depending on the charitable organization that's impacted, such as Muscular Dystrophy and, uh, Bikers for Babies and, uh, the Red and Blue Friday, um, types of activities, um, you know, they, um, some of those jurisdictions met, you know, considerable, uh, at least opposition to banning that completely. Um, so what we proposed, and, and you have that in front of you, um, does create, um, a number of restrictions for those organizations that would, um, engage in that type of activity. And, and we feel like, um, that proposed ordinance, uh, will provide a significant number of restrictions to keep, uh, those organizations which may be questionable, um, may not have, um, the actual credentials, uh, those sorts of things, uh, keep them from participating in those, um, at, at our intersections that we've designated. So if anyone has any questions, I know you've got the ordinance in front of you, so I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions? Counsel members Stevens, Vayner and Wesco?
Is there any reason we actually need this at all? I mean, there's so many ways to give now. Do we really need people out on the street doing the same thing?
Um, well, and, and actually, of course, I know you remember that, that in response to, um, that type of activity that was going on, um, on our streets and, you know, we had a number of, of complaints, um, the police department was responding, um, to those types of complaints from, uh, people in the community that, uh, there were people on street corners that were actually soliciting donations, uh, crush questionable credentials at the time that, uh, we were responding, uh, to those types of complaints. So it is happening. Um, and of course, it's not only happening in places like Raymore and, and as we, um, conducted research and looked at other jurisdictions, you know, it's certainly happening in other locations as well, um, with those types of organizations that I just mentioned, like Bikers for Babies and the boot blocks that are conducted by the firefighters and things like that, so.
I'm wondering, um, just as a hypothetical, if we have a group that manages to get a
permit and gets on the corner, um, how we, um, think we might monitor them so that they remain within the regulations of the permit, um, during their, their stay on the, on the corner?
Well, as you see from the, the restrictions that are being proposed, you know, obviously, um, you know, if, if those individuals, um, that are a part of that organization, um, don't meet that very strict criteria and, and one of the, the things I'm sure that you probably noticed in the proposal, um, is safety vests and, and the number of people that are allowed at any given corner and, and those types of things, which, you know, are very easy for us to visually monitor, um, you know, just from, from, you know, passing through those intersections as that activity is being conducted. Um, again, you know, times of day and, and things like that and the length of time that they're able to solicit, um, again, you know, if they're not out there at the times that they're supposed to be out there, that's very easy for us to monitor. Um, my hope is, is that we will do the majority of our due diligence on the front end, uh, making sure that we vet those individuals, um, during that permit process.
Counsel member Wesco?
You know, as, as this ordinance is drafted, I, you know, I don't have an issue with the, the ordinance itself. Um, the reason why I don't like the, uh, the, the solicitation is because of the, the section of highway that it's allowed to be done on is between Dean Avenue and Johnston Parkway on 58 Highway, which is a five-lane stretch of road. And it's also the busiest, uh, section of road in our entire city. I think there's, if I remember the numbers right, isn't there like 27,000 cars that, 30, 34,000 cars go through that intersection a day? 34,000. And we're going to allow a, a charitable organization to disrupt that flow of traffic. Now, I mean, I've, I've seen the boot blocks, I mean, I've, Belton has done them for years and I have never seen it done to where it did not impact traffic. Never. And that was a, a smaller road with less traffic than what this is actually talking about doing. I mean, to allow somebody to solicit on the major thoroughfare with 34,000 cars going through it, to me, doesn't make sense. Uh, I think there's better alternatives for those organizations. And the next question is, is since we have an ordinance in place and since we require the permit and the insurance, if something does happen, does that create a sense of responsibility for the city since we do have a permitting, uh, procedure and since we do require? Can we be named in a suit if something does happen to either one of the people collecting or, uh, by default, the, the accident that's caused because of that act?
We can be named in the suit and I can guarantee you, if something happened, we absolutely would be named in the suit because we're bigger than the person who's, who's the, the organization itself, at least in people's mind. Uh, we have checked with our insurance company. Uh, we would eliminate about 99% of the problem that's associated with the complaints that we receive. The complaints we receive are, aren't so much the, the donation itself, it's, it's the people who are asking for it, that they don't appear to be legitimate, uh, they're aggressive to the drivers, they're aggressive in the way they approach traffic, uh, they walk down lines of cars, which is incredibly disruptive to the flow of traffic. The, uh, the interse- so what we feel is that the insurance requirement being so high is going to eliminate all but the two or three known groups that you know, who are going to be out there, the firefighters, uh, bikers for babies, groups that can actually stand to get that. Will it eliminate us being named? No. That's one of the reasons we have to be a co-insure on their insurance, but very quickly, our insurance company indicates that they would be able to get us out of that lawsuit.
Counsel member Morehead?
Sorry to play the technical, technicality card here. I'd like to requ- I'd like to suggest some language change. On page two under the solicitation definition, um, there's, I, I'm seeing a loophole here. I, I would like to add dur- within the context of the dependent clause of either oral or written to include or by gesture. Um, I could see an issue where you could get somebody who would basically not have anything in writing and not say anything, but the gesture of presenting the collection device is the solicitation gesture. And we state in the next paragraph, um, we mention unwanted physical contact or blocking, which are gestures. So I think it, it would be more sound to include by gesture as well, as a method of communication.
I am flatly opposed to it. I think we should have a ban on it completely because I'm thinking about myself driving over, or, you know, I volunteer at the hospital and I'd be driving over. There is no way that they can come to me because everybody has their, um, car windows up, either heat on or air conditioning and, uh, the, sometimes they're even, the doors are locked, so they're going to have to get in the street and come around on the driver's side to, uh, approach us for, um, a solicitation. And that puts them right there in danger of anybody trying to pass, because I, if I'm on the right, uh, lane and someone comes around to, to approach me, there's someone on the left lane then that is scooting ahead and somebody is going to get hurt. And I can't think of anything worse than being responsible for running somebody down when you didn't intend to. And it is, I don't think that we should be in, in the situation where we are taking traffic, uh, matters and slowing them down by just having a lot of, um, people out there asking for money, asking for money. Let's not, uh, let's, let's not impact our traffic, let's not endanger the people's lives and I, I think we should turn it down regardless. I don't think we should have any, any, uh, solicitation on any of those corners because when you turn, figure it out, you're talking about having two on each intersection. But still, when you're making a turn, a right lane turn, they still can't get to you unless they, um, cross the two or three different lanes. And if they're going straight ahead, they can't get to you unless they cross several lanes of traffic and there's no way that they can do it without impacting traffic.
And again, I, I actually would incur with, uh, council member Hubach, um, for, in my opinion, to have any risk at all to the city, even if it's 1% for no payoff, I think is irresponsible. Um, you know, we're, we're allowing somebody to do something that the city is not going to benefit from, that the city does assume some liability for. Um, so, you know, to me, it's, it's more legally defensible to just say, "We're not going to do it" and to turn it down all, altogether, which is the position that I take. However, if this does go forward, I would make the recommendation to, to, to request that the limits of liability be at least a million dollars because for a bodily injury claim, 100 to 300, that's not very much. So if we're going to protect the city, I think that we require, uh, limits in excess of millions. That way, you know, because you run somebody over or somebody gets hurt or, I mean, you know, 50, $60,000 is a, a drop in the bucket anymore. So 100 or 300, uh, those limits will be reached very quickly.
This would be from the charitable organization. We're covered to 2,400,000, 200, 2,470,000, just by sovereign immunity.
Counsel member Douglas or Kellogg?
Thank you. Um, I think that we approve a lot of things that don't have 100, that have zero risk. I think that to, to say we're not going to approve this because there's zero risk involved, um, I'm not sure is a very good argument. I feel like over and over, we keep taking away, not that soliciting on the streets is really a right that everybody should have, needs to have, we're all going to go do it tomorrow, but I think that we keep making all these restrictions and I feel like rather than banning it, if we have some guidelines that say, "This is how you can do it," that keeps the city protected, all but 1% seems fair. I think saying, you know, having safety precautions, making sure that it's the issue, making sure that it's really a reliable organization. I mean, the, the issue that brought this up is that anybody, people lying about what they're getting money for, anybody can go stand on a street corner now and ask for money. So the point of this is to say, okay, if you want to stand on the street corner and ask for money, you have to follow these rules, you have to verify that you are an organization that is a recognized charitable organization, you have to have insurance so that that protects you and protects us. Um, I don't, in my opinion, I think banning this is a little bit overstepping our bounds. I think setting guidelines is the right way to go and I think that's good.
Counsel member Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that what staff has done here and with what Mr. Morehead has, has, uh, suggested as far as adding gestures is, is reasonable. Uh, it's adding restrictions to where we don't have any right now, you know? I see Mr. Westcoat's point as upping that too because I agree with him, you know, $100,000 won't last you two days in a hospital. Get hit by a car or by a motorcycle, you, or get thrown off a motorcycle by somebody aggressive, $100,000 ain't going to touch it. So, you know, I, I agree with, with this being restrictive. Now, I have taken calls over six years of what we're discussing, people asking for money. It's never been from the firefighters that have been out collecting with their boots over Labor Day. It's never been for bikers for babies, Ed's posse, never, once. Nobody's ever complained about those two groups. Those are the two main groups. What I have gotten complaints on is people standing outside the Walmart away from 58, panhandling. Okay? People, I even get complaints about them standing off of the bridge on 71 as they're coming, trying to come into Raymore. I get those complaints. Can't do a dang thing about it, it's Belton. Um, so, you know, looking at the past complaints and, and concerns, it isn't from the, the people that we're restricting. What we're doing is making sure that those people, and those are very, very, very reputable, very valuable people that, that draw up a lot of money for those very good causes, year after year after year, always have been. We are making sure that those people are still able to do this. We are restricting it, but we're adding safety restrictions to it. We're adding safety vests so that they can be seen reflectively and, and be identified that that's what they were doing. You know, the, I see this as a good thing, you know, not saying they can't do it. I, I, I'm not going to be a part of that, okay? I'm not, everybody's entitled their opinions and I respect those opinions, but I'm not going to support banning this to those groups. I, I just don't see the use in it. I, I don't see that being good PR for, for Raymore and I don't see it being a good outcome for the, the groups that are benefiting from these monies that are being collected. What I do see in parallel to this, that, that we are not discussing, and I'm going to sound like, oh, there's Kellogg with no kids and don't know a dang thing about raising a kid. Okay? So there, there's my disclaimer. I've got real concerns when I see the cheerleaders or the Girl Scouts or the Boy Scouts in the car washes lining 58, out there dancing with their, their signs, their pom poms and God love them because they look really good, you know? And it's fun to see them. But they're excited. Those are kids out there, you know? And I have seen them go out into the street at a 45 mile an hour speed limit. There's no restrictions on that. We are not even talking about that. So for somebody to, to, you know, I'm going to be, I'm going to be judgmental here. If we're going to worry about a, a mature, grown adult that's, that's responsibly and reasonably out there trying to solicit funds and not wanting to get hurt, we're restricting them, but we're not restricting any, any adult supervision of high school students, I, I, I think we're, 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 we're dotting Ts and crossing Is at, at some point.
I'm in agreement with, uh, council member Delgoat on this in that it, it seems to me that if we've, if we've set the bar high enough that we filtered out, um, those that are incapable of following the safety rules and precautions that are there and we've set it up so that if, even if they do get the permit, if while they're doing it, they can't seem to maintain that obedience to the regulation, that we can pull their permit immediately and send them home. Um, I really don't have any, um, objections to this. I think, um, what we're doing here is, is good and I, I don't think we ought to ban it outright. I think we ought to allow it, but with the safety precautions and regulations and guidance that has been provided.
You know, I think any solicitation that takes place on 58 Highway should be banned completely, regardless of who it is. This was just the one that was before us tonight. I mean, I, again, I think it's irresponsible. You know, when I was growing up, we used to, when there were kids that, you know, didn't like each other, they used to tell them, "Well, why don't you go play in traffic?" And we're permitting it. You know, so, I mean, to me, fundamentally, you know, I have a problem with it. And, you know, you can take an organization that has the best safety rating ever, and one mistake, and it'll cost you alive, especially when you're playing in traffic with 34,000 other people who are driving that might not be as attuned to the safety requirements as what you are, who's out there. Again, you know, it's not the people that are just walking out and taking the donations, it's also the people coming up over the hill. I mean, think about the lay of the land in some of these intersections, and, you know, again, to me, it's just not responsible to allow it to occur. And again, if we are going to allow it, the organization that creates it should have just as much skin in the game as the city. Why should the city, who has the deeper pockets, you know, have to absorb any risk when they're not the ones who is responsible for conducting the activity? Which is, again, why I think we should shy away from allowing the activity altogether, because it's more legally defensible than permitting. But if it is going to move forward, I would highly recommend at least, you know, the million dollar limits, so that they have as much skin in the game as the city does. I mean, the city should bear no burden in this type of activity, and the city's going to get named. And whether or not the attorneys can get us dismissed, why should the city assume any risk at all?
Let's remember Morehead.
I'm going to concur with upping the insurance to the 1 million, 2 million. I agree. I've been on the litigation side of too many of these, and $100,000 can succeed very quickly. Councilmember Kellogg brings up a point that we haven't really talked about, and here's the important thing. We're worried about people standing in the street. The language of this, of this section and these regulations are applied in an entirely different way. We have a business, and I'll say them Dairy Queen, because they're very generous. They allow a lot of groups there to have car washes there. According to this, you don't have to collect the money at the intersection. Standing at the intersection, waving people in to ultimately give and solicit money applies under this language. And so, to ban that, we're banning now every school group that wants to have a car wash because two people are holding a sign at, under Section 5, a traffic controlled signal intersection at 58 Highway, specifically I reference 58 and Fox Ridge. So, I'm, I don't want to shut this down. I think the regulation that we're being asked to do is completely appropriate. This allows those organizations to work in both the literal biker for baby or the firefighters, or the private school groups that may not ask for the cash at the intersection, but wave people in to then get the solicitation. But I do support the 1 million, 2 million adjustment.
We're talking about the traffic in the city of Raymore moving, and people are already telling us that they have trouble getting through town. Why would we want to do anything that would slow the traffic down even more so than what it is? I just cannot see, I understand that the reasoning behind it, that we want to help certain charities, we want to help the schoolchildren and everything, but streets are to move traffic. They're not to be used for panhandlers, whether they're inside the city limits or outside them. And I just think that we should take into consideration the people that are driving, the Raymore citizens that are trying to get out of Raymore to go to work, or whatever other reason, and see that they have good driving conditions, and putting people near the streets is not one of them. Because we hear all the time about road rage, well, you could have road rage just as easily on something like that, and somebody is turned down at any other time, whether they're actually on the street or not. And so, I just not in favor of doing it. I think the whole community would benefit if we banned it.
Thank you. I was just going to say that this actually says, "No person or organization shall solicit for charitable donations on public streets," in the beginning. So, I feel like what Councilmember Morehead was talking about really doesn't quite apply if they're standing beside the road or in the parking lot beside 58 Highway and not actually in the street. This applies to only people who are trying to collect money by standing in the street.
I see your point. What they're doing, they're entering the street, you know, and that, where it's different. The school groups, when they're out there doing their car wash and stuff like that, they don't normally step out into the street to solicit that, and I respect that, and I agree with that. But I, I'm having a difficult time with, you know, that loophole right there because they're in the right of way.
The city right of way, or?
You know, that allows them to do that, you know, because at a stoplight, they're not, well, I shouldn't say that. The way I've seen them operate is when traffic is at a red light. They're in the middle of the street at the double yellow line in the middle, waiting for the traffic to stop, and then they approach those folks until the light turns its color. They usually don't stand off on the side and cross into the traffic, you know, but that's really not saying anything good for their operation. I know that, but I, you know, if I was to do it, and I think most of these people that do it are of sound, reasonable mind, they don't want to get hurt, they do it in a way that they take their own personal safety into consideration. At least, that's the way I would do it.
Councilmember Westcoast?
Councilmember Delgoat, where were you reading that solicitation doesn't occur on a public street?
I'm sorry, it was just right at the beginning, subsection A, it says, "No person or organization shall solicit for public, for, sorry, charitable donations on public streets in the city of Raymore without prior written application and approval from the chief." I just read the very beginning.
Okay.
Of it, just that specified that this applies to soliciting on public streets.
Okay, I guess. Well, but the solicitations, were you just saying that Councilmember Kellogg's example doesn't apply? Because this actually, I mean, most of the solicitations are done for what we're talking about on the streets, though.
Right. What I was saying, they were saying, Councilmember Morehead said that this would hold, for example, the cheerleaders having a car wash at Dairy Queen under these same guidelines, but that's different because that's not on the street, that's in the parking lot. Even though sometimes the kids stand, as Mr. Kellogg was saying, stand beside the street with their signs to try to get people to come in. And so, these guidelines would not apply to that because they are not actually on the street soliciting. Councilmember Morehead?
I respect the trend to define that. I mean, Joe probably would be better here because the problem here is, the person being solicited is in the public street. They're in the car being solicited. I mean, I guess I would hate to splice the hair here and have somebody have a long pole with a basket so they don't officially step out into the street, but the pole being extended out into the street is equally disruptive because we're concerned about the traffic in the street. So, I mean, this is the problem when we get into defining these types of things. It really requires a legal decision, a legal opinion. Joe would be best to give that, or Chief Zimmerman.
Well, and we were really just looking at, you know, sometimes that activity, you know, they get overzealous, they step into the street. We're trying to flag cars even, even if they're just flagging them into the parking lot, we're trying to keep them from stepping into the street.
You know, the talk about this time between, was it sunrise and sunset? When the sun's coming up and when the sun is setting, whether you're going east or whether you're going west, that blinds you so that you can sometimes not even see what the cars are in front of you. And for somebody to step outside and ask for your solicitation, that's really dangerous. If they want to do it, high noon is the only time that it's actually safe.
You know, I'll finish my position with this. As you'll note, if you flip to the last page, my name has been removed, so I don't actually get a vote on this. So, a lot of this, my discussion is just academic. But I will say this, the best way to ever prevent an accident is not be there in the first place. So, you know, here we're trying to limit accidents and potential things like that. The easiest way and the surest way to do it is to just ban the activity altogether. And I'll finish with that.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mrs. Hubach does bring up a very valid point, as far as, you know, half hour before, half hour after. I would even go as far as say that, you know, rethinking this, this regulation, an hour before sunset, or an hour after sunrise, because those are very, very difficult times. And the street that we're talking about where it happens is on 58 going east and west. And I think we all have driven enough to, we know that that is very true there. So, you know, what, the good thing is, is that we are requiring in this, if this does pass, reflective vest and stuff like that. But, you know, I appreciate you saying what you did, because that is a very valid deal there. But I would say an hour before sunset and an hour after sunrise.
It'd make it really easy for the police department if it was from 12 to 12:15. So, I'd go with high noon, because Miss Hubach said.
I had a question for Chief Zimmerman. Obviously, what kind of initiated this was the charitable organizations there at 58 Dean, is what we see most commonly. And we've touched on this a little bit, that we have the individuals soliciting for donations for themselves there at the first private drive into Walmart just south of that location. Would at this time be your intent to direct staff to enforce that, this, enforce that action, or use that, this enforcement action for that type of activity based on this ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. You've got to decide whether or not we move this forward. Two, three, four, five, five.
Just very briefly, with the following changes, we would move this forward. Adding, or by gesture, under Solicitation on Page 2, changing the insurance requirements to 1 million per claim, 2 million per occurrence, and having the hour, and 12 to 12:15 for the activity to occur.
I like that.
Under close personal supervision. An hour after sunrise and an hour prior to sunset. All other requirements still in place.
Eight people standing on that intersection, but there's, I think it says two at each one. So, at each intersection, then you're going to have two here, two here, two here, and two here. Is that right? Try to get them coming from all directions.
We, we actually don't control the entire intersection. So, it would be more than likely that there would be two only at our controlled accesses. And if they, the other thing that we had discussed on this, if Belton doesn't give them permission, they're probably not going to seek permission from us, just on our roads. But it would have to be almost a joint, they're going to have to go to Belton and apply, they're going to have to come here and apply just for our controlled points of the intersection.
All right. Thank you.
There you go. Thank you. Got it. Mr. Fearwood just brought up a good point there, is that, you know, and to answer that question, the ordinance says eight, you know, so you do the math, you assume there's going to be two for each direction. But that doesn't necessarily, that doesn't spell this out there, that there can't be eight on one. So, that is a very good point. I guess I would like to add, you know, to what you've taken down, that no more than two on any.
Corner.
Any quadrant, you know, with up to the maximum of eight for an intersection. Is everybody okay with that? We'll add it. Thank you.
All righty. That takes care of the second item. We'll come up to the third item.
Thank you, sir. PF Raymore Holdings LLC is the developer of record for, they have, they are considering a TIF and a CID for the southeast corner of 58 and Dean Avenue, currently known as the Dean Family Farm. They, they had, the council will remember, they had turned in for an advanced funding agreement, and at the same time that they turned in for the advanced funding agreement, they submitted their initial draft financing plan to city staff for our review. The council heard the first reading of the funding agreement, and as those are going on, there are initial discussions relative to the numbers that staff is seeing. That always happens, pretty common during that period. At the same time that Raymore Holding was doing that, they were moving forward with community development in getting initial plans in place, doing an initial site review, incurring some cost on that. We, staff was strongly encouraging them to, to slow down, if you will, and make sure that the advanced funding agreement was in place, and that they were proceeding in the due course of time with the TIF application and the CID, because you don't want the developer incurring a whole lot of costs, getting plans and plaits in place, when the TIF commission or the council may not be approving an incentive package on the back end. So, we feel that to be fair to TIF commission, to be fair to city council, and to be fair to the developer, we need to make sure that all of those are running parallel courses, if you will. The developer heard back from staff relative to our initial review of the financing package that was coming forward. The financing package that they are asking for is higher as far as public participation is concerned than is in the recommended section for the city council's economic development incentive policy. That does not mean that that is carved in stone. Every single development that comes forward is its own entity. Having heard that would probably lead to, in front of the TIF commission and subsequently in front of the city council, if the developer decided to hear that, that there would be a negative staff recommendation just based on the incentive policy and participation. The developer requested that the second reading, you'll remember from Monday night, of the advanced funding agreement be removed, and subsequently asked staff if we would approach the council on their behalf to ask if the city council would be interested in conducting a work session where they could present the plan to you. The final financing would not be in place. I believe that it is the developers' reasoning in wanting to have the work session that they see some sort of reaction from the council that would lead them to then incur the costs that are associated with bringing it to the TIF commission. Once you take that next step, there are significant costs that are incurred by the developer. They have to do a blight study, they have to do a revenue study, they have to, they will incur significant legal costs associated with those. That being said, the city council has granted one work session prior to this to a developer, that was for the Foxwood Village Shops, for those of you who were around. To staff's knowledge, there has not been another presentation in this order, as far as a work session is concerned, requested by the developer before it goes to the TIF commission. The normal legislative process that is undertaken by a developer with this is to first approach the TIF commission. If the TIF commission gives favorable review, it comes before the city council, almost automatically. City council has to approve it by a simple majority. If the TIF commission does not give it favorable consideration, then it takes a supermajority in front of the council. This is, the request would be moving it outside of the council's norm for the legislative process. To that end, staff, myself, I did not want to be an obstructionist to the developer or to the legislative process, but I did feel I needed to, and therefore I felt I needed to bring it to the council. to bring it to the council to get your consensus on whether you want to hear from the developer in work session format, or if you want to turn that down and just ask the developer to proceed with the normal legislative process associated. That concludes staff reports.
Thank you, Councilmember Wesco, then Boehner.
When you say the public participation higher than what we normally do, how much higher?
Well, normally, we don't have a norm, the economic development incentive policy calls for, in essence, fifteen percent public participation, the, the TIF and CID combined for this one are at thirty percent.
So, so double that of our, of our norm?
At this point, sir, we haven't finalized the numbers, but the numbers where they stand right now are at thirty percent combined.
If, if I were remaining on council, which I am not, I would flatly turn that down. It's just my opinion. I mean, they're asking for more money than what everybody else who's gone into that development is asking for. You know, I, I would have to see a, a super huge payback from a development in order to justify more participation than we gave anybody else who actually generate revenue for this city. I mean, in my opinion, too, to do that, because that basically takes away money from our school district, is that not correct?
That, that's always difficult to quantify because right now there is no money going to the school district. And at, another component of the economic development incentive policy is that, is that the, the other, at least all of the other property tax entities and jurisdictions, it would be a fifty-fifty TIF. So they would be getting, right now they're getting nothing of nothing, if it went through, it would still be fifty percent of the revenues that were generated.
Councilmember Boehner.
I might be a little confused here. So by, by placing this in the next work session, is the reasoning behind that is that it will keep everything kind of concurrent and parallel? Is that why we're, that request is being made?
No, I'm sorry, sir, and I probably did a muddled job of explaining. The, the, the parallel would be, we were encouraging the developer to begin the normal legislative process. Let's get this thing moving forward, let's get the advanced funding agreement done, let's get it before the TIF commission, let's get it before the city council, if it goes that far. The, what the developer is asked is, before they even begin that legislative process, because they know that during the normal legislative process, it's probably going to receive a negative staff reaction, they want to come before the council in a work session format to explain what they feel are the, the benefits of the project moving forward.
Let's remember Morehead.
I, I want to be cautious because I don't want to discuss any of the substantive merits of this, because we haven't even, I mean, the idea is to have a work session to do this. It's my understanding tonight, the only question is, yes or no, are we going to allow them to speak to us before the normal legislative process?
Absolutely correct, sir.
Is the only, the only reason or the main reason that they feel like they would like to have a work session with us before the meeting with the TIF commission, because that number is so high?
Knowing that when it comes before the TIF commission, because of the staff, yeah, I feel it is incumbent on staff to make our recommendation based on the economic development incentive policy the council has set forth. The developer feels that they have a number of, of pros that go with that, that they would like the council to hear, get a, be very careful here, and get a reaction from the council on whether or not there would be at least favorable consideration, they don't want to spend a whole lot of money unless they know that there might on the back end be a favorable consideration. I would add, their attorney, who, who also has been an attorney for the city before Mr. Kirk Peterson, indicates that he would be willing to sign a letter stating that the council wouldn't, if you gave, if by a nod or whatever, that nothing that was the takeaway from the work session would be held against you at a later date if you voted no, they, they wouldn't, they wouldn't come forward with that. I'll let that rest right there.
But the right thing to do, the way the process normally works, is for them to go to the TIF commission first.
That's correct, and in fact, that is such a standard operating procedure of this council and other councils, that if you did grant them a work session appearance, that staff would strongly recommend that we invite the TIF commission. When, just a brief history, when this happened before with Foxwood Village Shops, it was very uncomfortable when we came before the TIF commission because they were very much in the dark as to why they weren't, why the legislative process was not followed, so we would encourage that that be a joint meeting if they were allowed. And if I may, just one, one calendar consideration on this, the developer has assured us, and they, they, they sometimes make this assurance, that, that they have financing issues that are incumbent on, let's get going, let's get going. From the things that staff has heard, they actually have financing issues that, that require appearance in front of the council by no later than the January 5th, what is now going to be a special meeting. What does that mean? The council could call for a work session on the fifth Monday of December between Christmas and New Years to hear just this. Your other option would be to interview candidates in special open session, at the special session for the War II vacant seat on January 5th, adjourn that meeting, and then go into work session with the, with the developer, making his presentation.
Councilmember Stevens.
He already answered my question, I just listened to him, he answered my question already.
Councilmember Kellogg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, not so much a question, but maybe somewhat of a question, but I do remember that last time that, that an instance came up like that, and it was very difficult, it was, it was, you know, it was made well aware to me by TIF commission, you know, why, why were they serving on the TIF commission if it didn't go to them? You know, that's what I was asked specifically. So, you know, and I, I understand that and respect that, you know, the, the, the process is to go before the, the TIF commission, they come before us, and just like what Jim says, if it, if it doesn't get approval through the TIF commission, it can still come by, but it does make it a, a supermajority. You know, I, I have some concerns as to, to why, you know, anytime somebody or a entity wants to jump over certain stepping stones, you know, that, that does concern me. The other thing that concerns me is, you know, and, and staff has kind of given me some assurance, you know, but there's no one hundred percent reassurance here for, as far as I'm concerned, on arbitrary and capricious terms, you know. I, I have a, a moral issue with giving my nod or, or my, my wink of my eye to the TIF commission to do what I wish they would do, you know. Personally, myself, I wish that I would let the TIF commission do what their purpose is to do, and then let the process flow that way.
Councilmember Boehner.
I'm actually pretty intrigued to find out what, what points are so compelling that, that we would change our minds in advance of a regularly scheduled meeting. I'm interested to know what they are, but I also think that if they are that compelling, they can probably wait.
Councilmember Wesco.
You know, I, I think the direction that this council should take is very clear with the fact that it had to be prefaced with, the council will receive a letter from the other attorney saying that they're not gonna hold you responsible for any acknowledgement that you might give. That whole disclaimer has red flags waving that should say, turn around and run away.
Let's remember Morehead.
My simple answer is no.
I think we should follow our normal process.
Mr. Mayor, I would agree with that statement right there. If we don't, then we may as well just go ahead and dissolve the TIF commission tonight.
Thank you. We have an executive session item.
Are you prepared to entertain a motion, sir?
Please.
I move that we enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters as authorized by RSMO 610.021 subsection three.
Second.
Motion to second ago in executive session, full call vote.
Councilmember Morehead?
Yes.
Councilmember Adelgaud?
Yes.
Councilmember Hubach?
Yes.
Councilmember Wesco?
Aye.
Councilmember Boehner?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Councilmember Kellogg?
Yes.
Councilmember Holman?
Yes.
Go into executive session, we'll return to the main meeting, only to adjourn.